And we're ready to go. Martin, you're in charge.
Great, thank you. Well, I'd like to open the Briar City Council meeting for April 26, 2022. I'm Martin Crinkie, council member, filling in for Mayor Kamik and covering for Mayor Protem Gallagher, who is joining us, however, today. So good to see him on. We will just, yeah, so I will. I will dispense with the flag salute and then take a roll call. Councilman Lockhart.
Here.
Councilmember Rosman.
Here.
Councilmember Moran.
I'm here.
Councilmember Nick.
Here.
Councilmember Marley.
Here.
Councilmember Gallagher.
Here.
I had to add you because I wasn't expecting you to be on. So it was great. All right. With that, and of course, I have so notified that I am here. With that, this is the time where we do public requests and oral communications. I did want to just make a couple of comments for the public, just so they understand a couple of things here. So this will be for topics that are not on the agenda for public hearing later in this session. But I would also like to note that this, there is not a public hearing tonight on the Phillips Ridge project, something that we are discussing as council, and I wanted to clarify that we are not able to take any public comments specific to Phillips Ridge Platte application. If there are general comments regarding the city of Briar's planning review process, other topics, that is acceptable, but I would respectfully ask that people understand that the public hearing was already held at our planning commission meeting on April 20th, and we're not allowed to hold a second, what would be considered a second public hearing. That would happen if citizens were to start speaking on that topic today, and Paula Swisher, our city clerk treasurer, will, would have to catch you off if that were to happen. So please be respectful of that. I appreciate that. With that said, do we have anybody who would like to make comments for things that are not on the agenda? You can indicate that by raising your virtual hand on Zoom there, and Paula will let you in, so you can share your comments. So far, not seeing anybody raise their hand. I'll give it one more chance for if there's anybody who would like to share any comments with city council this evening, please indicate so by just raising your hand on Zoom. All right. Well, with that, then we will move on. I do appreciate everybody's attendance this evening. With that, I will look for some motions from council on.
No reports of committees.
I did a Dale. I skipped past one. Yes, please. Reports of committees and of city officials.
I'll make my report, Martin, that a pitch hit for Mr. Mike Gallagher on Friday and came in and reviewed the claim checks. And I have a very special mention here tonight, that yesterday, Mr. Councilman Dave Marley took one for the team, and he was the taser dummy or crash test dummy, but, but he was in this great acting role for our taser training with our police force, and he was remarkable, and it was a long hot in a hot suit. And I just want to say special mention to David.
Great. You did it with the suit on, not with the suit off, huh? Really? I mean, come on.
It was like Gumby's, big Gumby suit.
I'm just mildly dumb, not totally.
No, no, no.
Are there any other reports?
I did attend the city strike that community transit board meeting and the community transit grand dirt digging event at Linwood Transit Center for the new community transit orange line, which to Briar is meaningless, but was eventful nonetheless.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I observed the Snohomish County Planning Commission meeting this evening, April 26.
When did those start?
Five thirty. I confess that I was not able to finish it.
Very great.
And I attended the planning commission meeting on April 20th.
All right.
I, I, I joined Dave. I was, I was an observer dialing in for that planning commission meeting last Wednesday as well, just to listen as a fly on the wall.
I think that there were probably some further discussions that might be appropriate on that topic, but we'll save that for another day. Thank you, Don. All right, anything else? All right. Moving on then to hearings on our agenda, we have two items. Did I skip? Oh, we haven't got, we still see now. I'm just like now.
Totally out of sync now.
Yeah, I know. Now can we have the approval of minutes, please? For motions.
I moved to approve the minutes April 5, 2022.
Second.
Right, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
None.
All right. With that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
And move to approve the minutes of April 12, 2022.
Second. I think we'll make, Marley made the motion and seconded by, we'll give that to Lockhart. She's by that much. So the motion has been made seconded. Any discussion? All right. With that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries.
And finally, move the, for approval of the April 19, 2022 minutes.
Yes.
Yeah.
To say it, come on.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made by Marley.
I thought Don was doing it.
Who blinks first? All right. Any discussion? All right. With that said, then, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now we move on. Now we're in sync. We're out hearings at this time. But we have two hearings tonight. The first hearing will be on public ordinance 480, on ordinance 482, mending Title 17 zoning division. I won't read all of it right now, but I will when we open it. Jennifer of Lockman, our city planner is with us.
I'm letting her in right now.
Yeah, and so as she's lit in, we'll let Jennifer out on it, and then I will open the public hearing.
Okay. Hi. Hope everyone can hear me. All right. So this agenda item is the public hearing on the ordinance 482, adopting the proposed amendments to zoning Division 1. Tonight, we hold the public hearing just on the ordinance part of that. This update is something we've talked about over numerous meetings, but it would primarily make housekeeping amendments to clarify terminology, procedures, and definitions relating to zoning. The update would also repeal BMC Chapter 1716, which regulated the home animal agriculture. This conflicts with BMC Chapter 620. The update would also repeal Chapter 1728, which regulated the residential 12, 20,000 square foot zone, and that had been removed from the comprehensive plan several years ago. So this is just one of those housekeeping updates to try and get everything in sync. We know we haven't made everything in sync, and we will continue to work towards that. But I'd strongly recommend going forward with these changes now for future applications. And so there was, have been numerous meetings on this over the last couple of years, including a planning commission public hearing last week at their April 20th meeting, where they recommended approval of the draft ordinance correcting one typo, which was done in your packets. It complies with our comprehensive plan, which directs the city to make routine updates to our development regulations. The SEPA official issued a DNS for the project, and our state partner agencies were notified of this project, and we did not receive any comments. So staff is recommending, go ahead and hold the public hearing, and then consider a motion to approve ordinance 482, amending Briar Municipal Code Title 17 Division 1.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. All right. Well, with that, then, I'm not going to read a lot here. I will open the public hearing on ordinance 482, amending Title 17 zoning Division 1, file number CA 21-02, providing for clarifying terminology procedures and definitions, repealing chapter, repealing Chapter 1716, home animal agriculture regulations conflicting with Chapter 620, and repealing Chapter 1728, which regulated the RS 20,000 zone. I will open it at 7:11. Are there any comments? Please raise your virtual hand.
I have one call in person that I can allow to talk and see if they have comments. Would the person with phone number 4256477420 like to speak in regard to this public hearing?
Nothing for me.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, with that said, we always like to try to get it to the next minute.
At least, Martin.
Yeah, exactly. So we'll just get everybody chats. If there's something, just they're lingering, thinking they might want to make a comment. We'll give them just a moment. All right. Well, the time has rolled over, so at this point, I will.
Hang on.
Hey, there we go.
I have a feeling this isn't regarding this though.
Yeah, let me clarify. So I just want to note that this is for our public hearing specifically on ordinance 482. This is, we've already closed the public comment section of this meeting that we had held earlier. So if this is anything other than talking to 482, I just want to make that clear. All right. Well, Paula, it looks like Robert is, still has his hand up. So I guess we'll make sure that's related to 482.
Now he took his hand down.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, then, we will close the public hearing on ordinance 4, discussion of, or public comments on ordinance 482 at 7:13 PM. All right. We will come back to that on a council vote in our next section. The, we have a second public hearing regarding the annual comprehensive plan amendment docket. So Jennifer, you'd like to take it away again, please?
Sure. Okay, so this is the public hearing on 2020, 2022 comprehensive plan docket. Again, we'll hold the public hearing and then consider which amendments, if any, to direct staff and the planning commission to consider this year. Both the WAC and Briar Municipal Code require that the city take input from the public as to proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan each year. There's a step outlined in our code, and I have that in the staff report, and we're currently at step one, which is to hold the council's hearing to look at the list of suggested amendments, if any, and then recommend which ones be sent to the planning commission for further work. So the opportunity to submit the applications for changes was announced in 2022 at meetings for the planning commission and the city council in January. We also posted this to the Herald and on city posting sites. There were no suggestions from the public provided, but staff is recommending that we do our capital facilities plan update, which is required to be done every two years. So staff recommends that council direct staff to prepare the capital facilities plan for review by council and at a future planning commission public hearing.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Right, with that, then, I will open at 7:15 the public hearing on the annual comprehensive plan amendment docket. If there's anybody that would like to address the council and speak on this topic, please signify by raising your hand. All right, I'll just give everybody a chance and just repeat again. If there is somebody in the attending audience today that would like to address the council regarding the annual comprehensive plan amendment docket, please do so by signifying, raising of the hand. All right. We will give it just a moment. Just make sure that we've given everybody a moment. All right, one last time, if there is anybody in the attending audience that would like to make any comments regarding the annual comprehensive plan amendment doc, please raise your hand. All right. Seeing nothing, giving ample opportunity, I will close the public hearing at 7:16. Counsel, this one is not on, it wasn't in our list of items, so I'm just going to move on this one. If somebody would like to make a motion on going with what staff has recommended for this particular comprehensive plan about looking at preparing the next capital facilities plan and sending all that back on as it'll move towards planning commission, as Jennifer noted, I would so entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
None.
All right, and the council didn't have anything else. It was like we, everybody's just comfortable with work on the capital facilities at this time. All right. Well, thank you. Well, with that, then, let's, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carries to move that forward. Thank you, Jennifer, on that. All right. Then moving to item eight, we'll pick up the other items here. The next one would be to, I would look for a motion, council is so inclined to approve ordinance 482.
Martin, I'll make the motion on this one with just a couple of minor recommended changes. So, so move to approve ordinance 482, mending Title 17 zoning Division 1, file CA 21-02, with the following changes. On line 26, revise the words, or a change in occupancy to, or a change in occupancy classification on line number 310. Change the phrase, "a lot is a lot which," to "a lot which." And if you read the entire paragraph, it'll make sense there.
And. I'm listening to Paul's typing fast.
And then the final recommended change is to replace on line 539, after the words, "dimensional requirements of this part", just replace the comma with a period and then start a new sentence with, "in addition, other potential negative effects," is all.
He said there were two, there were three. I'll amend my second to second.
Good eye, David.
Right, did we have a, we had all those, did we have a second on that motion?
Gallagher.
That was Gallagher. Thank you. All right. Is there other discussion, other items or anything?
Yeah, may I, may I ask for a clarification to line 833 through 837? And unfamiliar with the city council's role here. So essentially, line 8333 begins, "The city council will establish the required setback during design review to provide ample buffer." I wasn't, I wasn't familiar with that concept. So how does the city council, I guess, establish a required setback?
That would be done when the conditional use permit for that particular project or building comes to the city council. They would make that as one of the conditions of that approval, similar to if we approve a conditional use permit for, say, a secondary dwelling unit, that has come up more recently than anything in the neighborhood business zone. You can set setbacks that are more or less stringent than what are in the zoning code for that section.
Okay. So if I read this, 822, this section is called minimum setbacks. This is essentially giving the city council latitude to modify those setbacks based on the submission from an external, whatever, an applicant. Is that correct?
Correction.
Okay.
We've had a few scenarios where some of these have come up, and it's close. Maybe there's a little bit the way a corner fits or other things, and so does give council a little bit of leeway. We had one that came in a little too much after the fact once from a builder, so I don't think council is inclined on that, but this definitely helps tighten that up, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other discussion? All right. Well, that's all that, and the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Right, moving on to the next item. I did want to make a couple of comments here, just tee some things up for folks on this particular topic. There's been some, just a few things I thought would be important to just call out. So when I received the packet on Friday and I looked at the staff report, there were some recommendations from bland commission that were items that weren't supported by code, or in one case, it was a statement that was subjective and not enforceable. And I just want to make sure that our council understands that as we make decisions, it needs to be based on what our codes define. We're setting guidance on applied applications. To that end, also John Forba, who Paula will be bringing into our discussion, our city engineer, did provide a summary of those items and a specific assessment of those items and the applicant's plan as they are evaluated against their code, and that was sent yesterday. So hopefully, everybody did get that email from Paula yesterday and got a chance to read it. We also, as was noted, Dawn is on our city attorney, who has joined us this evening to help with answering any questions and provide any appropriate guidance as we consider granting preliminary plat approval. Also, it is my understanding that from our city engineer that he heard back from the developer, and they have expressed a willingness to provide the planning strip that is referenced in the staff report, and the city engineer has indicated in that same report likely implications of such and which council can discuss. So I think that was great. And then also, I just wanted to note that the comprehensive plan serves as a guide to better help draft city codes to, for us to achieve items that are stated there, but in, it is not in of itself an enforceable set of rules when taken on its own. And then finally, if there are topics that folks would like to do a deeper dive into regarding plat development applications, how they're processed, assessed, the mayor, Jennifer, our city planner, would be glad to ensure that such is handled in future council workshops. So with all that said, I'd like to now have Jennifer, you know, go ahead and tee it up for everybody, and then council, we can have a great discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Martin. So this is an application from Afora Holdings LLC to do an eight lot subdivision of the property at 22015 Old Poplar Way. They are requesting preliminary approval of the Phillips Ridge subdivision. And for tonight, it's consideration of the Phillips Ridge preliminary plat according to the terms and conditions of the draft Phillips Ridge preliminary plat resolution. As stated before, this is an application for an eight lot subdivision. The application was made July 28, 2021, and deemed complete 2022. The proposal would divide the existing parcel, which is 5.5 acres into eight lots. The zoning is residential 12,500, as are the neighboring lots on all sides. The lots will meet our minimum lot size and range from 12,710 square feet to 28,710 square feet. The existing single-family residence detached garage and septic system will be removed, and there will be three critical areas as part of the subdivision. There are 223 significant trees on the property. The applicant is proposing to remove 112 of those. The majority of these trees are in the locations where there would be proposed buildings, driveways, other features that are part of the proposed subdivision. The applicant would be required to do a major tree removal permit and provide assurances for tree protection as well as the replacement of required trees according to our code at the two to one ratio. There'll be a stormwater system, including a detention vault, where the water would be stored and released at a flow that's consistent with predeveloped forested conditions. There'll be sewer provided for the new residences. Some of those would be served by grinder pumps. There'll be water service provided by Alderwood Water and wastewater. And then in terms of access, there'll be a new public road with cul-de-sac. Two of the lots are going to take their access directly from Old Poplar. So I turn it over just briefly to John Forba to see if he wanted to add anything relating to the stormwater system that's being designed for the project.
Sure. So as it is designed currently, the runoff from the impervious surfaces and the converted surfaces that, say, go from forested to lawn, they will be drained to the detention vault, as Jennifer mentioned. It, that detention vault will detain the water and release it at a lower flow rate that matches the durations from the predeveloped forested conditions. So actually, going back, the entire site was modeled as underforested conditions rather than the existing, even when there, where there is a current structure in a driveway on the property. From there, the stormwater will drain to a proprietary water quality facility. It's a cartridge system that has filter media in it that removes toxins, metals, and the lake. Be released on the property outside of a critical area tract, as we are restricting, putting, putting stormwater features in, in critical area tracks whenever possible. The roadway design is consistent with the Briar Municipal Code, and I guess at this point, I would just turn it back to Jennifer.
Sure. So the project was reviewed. It complies with, you know, the goals of our comprehensive plan to, you know, accommodate growth, to control and direct growth, to encourage development where public facilities and services exist and can be provided in an efficient manner. The proposal meets our zoning code. It's all the lots will be 12,500 and meet, you know, the required setbacks, building width, and maximum lot coverage. The project underwent environmental review. The applicant prepared a SEPA checklist, which was reviewed by Eileen Davis. She's here tonight. She's the city's SEPA official, and she issued a DNS determination of non-significance for the project. We did provide notice of this project to the neighbors, as well as in the Herald and on our posting sites. There were a number of questions that came from the public that related generally to how is stormwater going to be handled? What trees would be removed and critical areas? We also did receive a number of written comments. Those are provided in the packet. They were provided to the planning commission in advance of the meeting, but also are in your packet tonight. The majority of those comments related to stormwater and, you know, water leaving this particular site, tree removal, as well as land disturbing activity and potential erosion, and then just the general impacts of development on our, the Briar community. In response to some of those questions, you know, the applicant did provide geotechnical reports prepared by a licensed geotechnical engineer evaluating the site and proposal. The reports did include design recommendations specifically on grading, construction methods, as well as surface water drainage recommendations. And these recommendations were implemented in the proposed plans and reviewed by the city engineer and staff. There was also a stormwater site plan prepared, which complies with the Washington Western Stormwater Manual for design of these types of facilities. And the applicant had provided a landscape plan, which shows the trees to be retained, as well as preliminary plans for replacement and plan. And the applicant had provided a landscape plan, which shows the trees to be retained as well as preliminary plans for replacement and planting. So as previously noted, the application was noticed to property owners. We originally planned the public hearing for March and determined additional information was needed. Property owners were notified that the hearing would instead be held April twentieth. That meeting was held last week at the planning commission meeting. During that meeting, one member of the public spoke, Mr. Gillingham requested information on impacts to the creek. And the applicant responded that the creek is offsite and there will be a hundred and sixty-five foot buffer that would be in a critical area tract. Information was also requested from Mr. Gillingham on potential traffic. Our city engineer responded that a traffic engineer was not required for this project because we expected that the addition of seven residences would not generate significant traffic. And then the in terms of looking at long term planning for traffic, that would happen when our comprehensive plan is updated again in twenty twenty-four. During the commissioners' time to speak, they had a number of questions and comments, including regarding the trees. The applicant is proposing to engage an arborist to review the retained trees and the tree protection measures as required under Briar Municipal Code seventeen fifty-two would be installed five feet from the drip line. Commissioner Demaree also asked about replanting trees and options if the developer cannot plant the trees on the property. Mr. Rossman expressed concerns over slopes and grading as well as the stability of the rock walls. And the concerns about traffic bringing in structural fill and removing other materials from the site as well as the compliance of this problem project with the comprehensive plan. There was also a comment regarding a potential crossing issue for how people would get from the new development over to the existing sidewalk on the east side of the property. And one of the commissioners was also interested to know if the native growth protection area would be critical areas. And he was informed that there'll be language in the plat that explains those requirements for those critical area tracks and what is and isn't allowed. And that language would be developed for the final plat. Commissioner Parsons was also inquiring whether the gravel trail should have a planting area similar to those that are further south along Poplar Way. At the conclusion of the meeting, after a few starts, the commission did recommend that the city council approve the preliminary plat for the Phillips Ridge subdivision according to the draft resolution as written, making several additional requirements that they hope to see added to the resolution. One was to retain ten percent more significant trees than currently proposed. Two, provide a planting strip and then three, reduce filling and grading as much as possible. There was. So staff looked at these comments and the recommendations of the planning commission and just wanted to convey these thoughts that the comprehensive plan is a planning document. It does not provide specific requirements. Those are in the municipal code. The critical areas are being protected as, you know, the comprehensive plan does, you know, propose by creating critical area tracks where the critical areas will be protected. Briar Municipal Code also states that the subdivision rider should retain natural foliage and trees. The applicant is proposing to retain fifty percent of the trees. They also plan to plant new trees, which will help maintain the canopy into the future. Based on a review, the project meets the requirements of BMC nineteen twenty-four one thirty for grading. There will be further review during the construction drawing phase of the walls and other features of these the project, including review by geotechnical engineer and appropriate reports for that. While there are no requirements in Briar Municipal Code for the multi-use trail, the applicant did indicate that they could accommodate that request. So staff is recommending that the city council consider the recommendation and grant preliminary approval of the Phillips Ridge subdivision according to the terms and plat of the resolution as written. That staff does not recommend adding the other recommendations from the planning commission to the resolution as, you know, in one case, it's vague and difficult to enforce. And in the other case, exceeds the requirements of our code relating to tree protection. I don't know if John wants to add anything to that.
Um, no, I think you've done a great job of describing the project.
Thank you, Jennifer. This is there's a lot to attack on on these without a doubt. And this one was maybe one with a little more unpacking. Appreciate it. Paul, would it be most appropriate for us to have a motion on the table and do discussion and let counsel?
Well, the applicant's engineer is also present.
All right. Awesome. Oh, yeah.
Wanted to let Brian talk. I've already got him in the meeting. So Brian, if you have anything to say.
Please do so.
Thank you. This is Brian Caleb with Inside Engineering. Just want to thank the city staff for their thorough review of this. Including the review after planning commission last weekend kind of threw us for a loop. But yes, we we are in agreement that we can put the extra planner strip along Old Poplar Way. Yeah, that's I guess that's it. So I'll I'll wait, I guess, for discussion if you have any questions that I can answer.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. So follow best we put a motion on the table and then have discussion from there.
That would be lovely.
Yeah. So if and again, if if people so decide they didn't want to move forward, we can always the motion can be pulled back. So would somebody be willing to put a motion on the table granting preliminary plat approval?
I'm jumping in. I'm going to make a motion to approve of uh, what do we got here? Resolution of five eighty eight granting preliminary plat approval for the Phillips Rib subdivision. S U B twenty-two dash zero two located at two two zero one five Old Poplar Way.
Think I saw I saw the lips move, Mike, but you were on mute.
So I'll second it unmuted.
Okay, motion has been made by Nick and seconded by Gallagher. A discussion.
I I have one question. And I'm sorry if I'm ignorant on this, but we don't see this a lot in our divisions and subdivision stuff, but lots four, five, six, and seven are going to be on grinder pumps. And I don't remember where it is, but who's responsible for the maintenance, repair and replacement of these pumps through their lifetime?
I can answer that. So those are all individual singular to the specific property owner. And the force mains that will bring this waste back up the hill will be located in the ten-foot easement just behind the sidewalk. So this will all be responsible of each individual homeowner.
Great. Thanks, John.
Yep.
Dennis, I think where you're going with that, if I was up, but just for folks, we had and I'm forgetting the name of the subdivision, but we when they became part of Briar, there was actually a full sewer line that had to be pumped back uphill. We find well, and we had
Golden View.
Golden View. Thank you. How could I forget the name? And it the backflow preventer failed and the poor folks that lived at the bottom of the hill. You know where things flow downhill. So anyway, yeah, it was not good. And anyway, so that's concerned. So yeah, good to know. These are individual homeowners on it. We did finally get connected when they put the sewer in down on the road below. So great.
Actually, I I'm sorry to interrupt in line three oh one, three oh two of the resolution. It does state that those would be the responsibility of the property owner.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jennifer. Very good.
I missed it.
As well, I have to admit.
Brian. I'm assuming. Go ahead, Mike.
I remember that we approved grinder pump shortly after the Golden View thing because we kind of had to, but they're okay now in the city.
Yeah. So individual grinder pumps are allowed. Pump stations are not. Regional facilities are not. So.
So in the design, then, Brian, you know, we live in an area where we're prone to power outages. I I'm assuming that we'll have to then inform or encourage these property owners to also invest in electric trick electric generators to keep their pumps functioning in the in the event of electrical outage.
Yeah, that would be advisable.
Yeah.
We've also in the past approved wet well sizing that allows for a certain amount of flow or of storage in the event that there is a power outage and that they're and they do not have a generator. So there there's a couple of different ways we can go about.
Yeah.
Seems like there is a requirement for something on the order of seventy-two hours of storage or so many gallons, something like that.
Don't flush.
Don't flush.
Sorry, I mean.
Don't do anything cause this flushing.
Yeah. So Jennifer noted it when I had read it, the comment that had been made about the the sidewalk. It was a great. I actually, I mean, it was a great question because I myself on a totally different thing in the city of saddle, we had a construction project that was going on. I was involved associated with. And we had asked that the thing was, well, why don't we put a crosswalk in the middle of the block? And unfortunately, those become things that become traffic discussions and things like that. So I did think that the people thinking of it, that was it was a great comment. And if you just get into some of these other challenges with traffic flow assessments and how you can actually put something in the middle of a of a block, if you think about where other crosswalks are, they are where you know, effectively their sections are coming in. So.
But black crossings have higher liability.
Yes, yes. So but did appreciate the detail and thought on that. Are there other comments as a quick questions? Folks might have.
Just just one comment. I appreciate the consideration of the planning of planning strip that you are considering putting in. And I assume that that is being done with consideration to the sightlines for the driveways for some of the houses that are going into Old Poplar as well as the entrance to the development. And maybe the overhead power lines are on that side of the street as well. I don't know if those are all being routed underground, but just since that was a late addition, I wasn't sure if that had been considered or not. Assume that will be part of the the final plat review.
Yeah. So at the construction drawing review, we'll make sure that there is a site distance exhibit for each of the new driveways as well as the the intersection with the new public road as well.
That was a great question. John, are are the utilities are staying overhead along the road there?
No, they're not. They're all being dropped.
Okay, great. All right. Awesome. Other other question.
I'd just like to share some observations and some takeaways that I picked up after listening to the planning meeting last week. Again, I attended, wasn't necessarily invited, but I I just was interested in hearing how this project goes. I was I was struck, I guess, by the debate that existed and that kind of transpired as Commissioner Rossman engaged John and and Brian on some of the engineering behind this project. The number that was very sobering to me was when Commissioner Rossman pointed out that we'll be importing fourteen hundred dump trucks or so of fill in order to level the surface and make a bed available for foundations and housing. I I did a little calculation before the meeting here today. Fourteen hundred dump trucks, eighteen feet in length would be a convoy that's four point seven eight miles long. That's a little bit of the distance between here down to just above the Edmunds Ferry of soil that's being brought in to make this site, I guess, navigable for building. Seems like an extraordinary amount of work, not only traffic, but a lot of work and potential Murphy's Law coming into play. And I know that as engineers, you've talked that through, but I wasn't quite convinced, listening to the debate by you, John, you, Brian and Carl, that that there was reconciliation and agreement that this was maybe the most prudent use of of soil and and sloping. The fact that we have sewers that have to be, you know, wastewater has to be pumped uphill, I think streaks to whether or not the surface really makes sense. But again, a lot of work for just eight eight houses for for that for that area. I I'm just wondering how to put that in perspective. It seems like, again, a heroic amount of work. I'm also concerned and Brian, you made it. You made a comment that really caught me off guard. I've been looking at the plat maps from Snohomish County and working in the maps that I've seen our comprehensive plan. And you made the discovery that the area where this property is going to be built on really is not per your discovery, a landslide area, a critical landslide area, which is contrary to how Snohomish County has mapped the area. And you 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 said that you and your colleagues had discovered that's an error. That's something that I would certainly like to have corroborated. If if the Snohomish County has listed this on a map and for these years has identified something as a critical landslide area and you found otherwise, I guess that's something we should we should make sure is 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 truly an issue that isn't going to become a confounder going forward.
I might address that those maps are, you know, planning based maps. They are not the result of on in the field surveys and studies they're using, you know, aerial photography, light, our other background studies to to project where those areas are. You know, I recently visit made a visit to a property where that showed us having that and it was completely flat when I arrived. So I just wanted to put out that word of caution regarding the use of those maps.
Okay, okay. And then the debate about the the retention wall itself, that there's a perimeter of walls, one of which would be as much as fourteen feet in height. And I know, again, there was no consensus among Brian, John and Carl on whether that truly was something which we could rely on as being a a forceful and and reliable wall, you know, long into the future. So again, my 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 discomfort is I'm not an engineer to know who's right and who's wrong on that, but that's an issue that I certainly would like a little more comfort on before I'd feel comfortable supporting the the site plan as as currently discussed. Jennifer, I appreciate the the recommendations of the council, but I I was just struck again that there's no unanimity among three engineers when discussing the discussing the project. And last but not least, it's just the aesthetics of the trees. I understand we can replace trees two to one. But it does kind of detract from the area and the habitat. Daily, I walk through the area and I find deer wandering through the parks and the streets that formerly had tree habitat. I was struck by the fact that the the individual who spoke most in the public comments you provided today, Paula, was Natalie Soldano, who lives in Briar, moved here five years ago. When she walks out her front door now, she no longer sees trees. She's looking right down the maw of the canyon of houses that are being built there along Atlas Road. So she 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 caught my eye when she mentioned tearing down trees was something she hated to see. And and I I appreciate the opportunity to to replace them, but we'll never get back the growth that's there today. So those are just my thoughts in in looking through the project in entirety.
Thank you, Dawn. John, I had, this is just a small question, and it's just happens to be because I live next door to subdivision and it happened long before the builder ever went in there. Are soils tested when they're brought in? Are they tested for contamination at a time? The reason I know is that there was, it was long before somebody brought in a lot of stuff into the countryside division. It turned out there was contamination. I think it came out of Seattle cleanup areas. Wasn't to health level concerns, but it did get on people's titles. Is that something that's just checked of when all, you know, when that amount of soil is being brought in?
Uh, yeah, we have a we have rules where you cannot bring in any contaminated soils that will be used for structural fill. And if we get lab reports, if necessary, sometimes depending on, you know, the what what used to be where where it came from, a lot of the time these builders, you know, borrow from one site to take to another, and it's the historical use of that site. If there was no, you know, previous development on it, we're not as stringent than asking for lab reports and things like that, but we we do follow up and see where it comes from.
Great. So it's stated where it's coming from and then you make an assessment based on that. Oh, got it. Thank you very much. Just like I said, I just know of a situation where it is just long before the builder ever got there on that. All right. Alright, awesome, any other thoughts, comments?
The question itself is, the, the Afora Group, AF, I don't know how it's, is it Afara or Afora? It's opaque to me, have we, do we, I've looked online to understand a little more about the company. They file annual reports, but they're not visible to me. Do we have an understanding of their, their ability to capitalize this project? Should they run into cost overruns and be able to take the project to completion?
That's what bonding is for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're required to submit bonds from, you know, we.
So can I speak? Sorry, Brian Callbage again. So Afora Group has been around for as long as I've been in business and I've been in business since 2003. So I, I don't have any doubt that they have the capital and the forewit to complete the project. But there are bonds that are, that are put in place that in case a developer does stop work, that the city can come back and, and pull those bonds and make sure that the site remains stable. So there's kind of that, and I did want to kind of talk about the grading a little bit and your concerns with the grading and the walls. I know 1,400 trucks seems like a lot of trucks, but they're not going to be in one line. The grading on this site is going to happen over weeks and maybe a month, two months. So you won't have a line of trucks, you know, from here to Edmunds at one point. So it's, it's kind of over time that the, the grading comes in. And in grading sites, we have to take into account a lot of regulations that we can't control like the, the maximum slope of the public road, which sets the elevations of the cul-de-sac. And Breyer has a code that you can't go more than a three to one slope on your grading, which is more stringent than other jurisdictions in the area. The other jurisdictions allow two to one slope, which allows you to catch up on your slope a lot quicker. So there are some factors in that, that make this seem like a lot more grading than maybe it needs to be. As far as the walls concerned, the walls will be signed by a geotechnical engineer or a structural engineer, depending on what type of wall is, is fixed. There are routinely walls of this type that go up 50 feet. So 14 feet is not an extraordinary amount of height for walls like this. And it's not, we're not inventing the wheel when it comes to these walls. So there will be engineers and geotecs looking at this and watching the wall getting constructed along the way. So it's not just something that you guys are going to approve tonight and then it's just like, okay, let them go. These will have signed plans and they will be inspected in the field. So like I said, just like to say that.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comments, discussion from council?
Maybe, maybe just to dovetail a little bit on that bonding issue and, and the ability to complete the project, you know, again, the public comment packet had remarks from folks who live on the leeward slide of the, upside of this slope, who are already experiencing pooling of water in their backyard and are worried about that being a continuing or maybe worsening problem. So when we put this project together and we have a bond, are we protecting them or in any way allowing them to be compensated for failure of, in other words, more water that maybe leaks from the soil due to maybe some miscalculation or soil shifting we weren't anticipating? So their fears, if their fears come to be worsened, will these bonds cover those individuals?
No, the contractor's insurance will. The contractor's insurance is the engineer's insurance because if his engineer has engineered the wall improperly and everything, it will then fall to them because they didn't engineer it properly and it caused damage. Honestly, we did just have a situation regarding stuff like this not too long ago. And the engineer and the developer, they took care of the individual homeowners because it was their responsibility.
So the homeowner then would have to retain counsel to help them pursue a complaint against the builder or the contractor?
In the, in the most recent instance, they did not have to, the developer immediately took responsibility and jumped in and started trying to fix what had happened, so.
Okay.
You're done.
Thank you.
Any other?
And correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the preliminary, it's not the final. So this launches the in detailed work, which we're not doing until we approve the preliminary.
That's correct.
Good call out, Mike, thank you. Any, any other comments or discussion?
I have a few.
Please.
So first of all, I appreciate the staff's work on the subdivision proposal. Surely the number of documents that came in with this packet demonstrate how much effort and work went into preparing it. So thank you for that work. I'm disappointed in the nature of this proposal. The density of the housing units, the amount of fill, the degree of land forming, it's a disregard for the natural environment that's completely incompatible with our natural, with our, the natural resources element of our comprehensive plan. Jennifer called out the elements of our comprehensive plan that this development is compatible with, and I agree with her points. However, it's also incompatible with E4, which says, as slopes increase, development intensity, site coverage and vegetation removal should be discouraged to reduce problems of erosion landsides, siltation and drainage. It's in conflict with that. It's in conflict with N2 that says we should strive to preserve steep hillsides and wooded areas in the scenic and natural condition. So although we are satisfying some elements of our comprehensive plan, I think we're also not fulfilling them in other ways. And that's the nature of development and I understand that. But I don't want us to delude ourselves that we're completely in compliance with our comprehensive plan as it exists. I am concerned about slope. There's been a couple of recent developments where there's been issues with slope. There's the two that come to mind are on the corner of 32nd and 228th, there's a sport court that was built and there's a slope next to it. It passed SEPA, it was fine. There's been erosion issues and it's still got black plastic over it six months after the event. And then down on Poplar Glen, at a 215th and Poplar, there was some regrading that wasn't quite right and it still looks not quite right. And I'm glad it hasn't slid onto the sidewalk. But my concern here is that our code is not robust enough in some ways, I think, for us to enforce some of these slope changes. And I'm concerned as this project goes forward, that we may regret that we don't have more thorough code in regard to slope and grading.
Even if we passed code today, Valerie? Even if you pass, even if you passed code today?
Oh, I know that. I'm just saying for the future.
Yeah.
That I have some concerns in that regard. So no worries, I'm not going to propose we change code in the middle of a project. So I, I noticed also that the boundaries of the critical areas is demonstrated on the buildable lands report at Snohomish County are in conflict with what I see in this, in this proposal. And I understand what you're saying, Jennifer, but at the same time, when I look at those images and the boundaries of where the critical areas are, are, it just doesn't totally mesh for me. And I don't have the critical knowledge or the right maps in order to know that it matches. And I trust that the staff has reported back what they've seen. But at the same time, I, I need to say like, for me, when I look at it, it doesn't match up and I have concerns about that. And I see that Eileen's on the call and I'd love to hear about any site examination that was done as part of this. Or maybe Brian can speak for her.
I wasn't, I think Oliver Altman did the critical areas reports for this site. I can tell you though, that as a wetland scientist, with some critical areas, a lot of the jurisdictions and a lot of the times the maps are not accurate. And that is why they require that you have somebody who knows what they're looking for, goes out there and actually delineates the site either for a steep slope or a stream or a wetland. Most of the time, the information, like if you use the National Wetland inventory or, and, and, or even DFW's maps, the streams and the, the wetlands and the steep slopes aren't always where they aren't always actually where they're shown. Snohomish County PDS maps are close to accurate, but they're not accurate. And when you're talking about an actual, you know, critical area, you need to know where the critical area actually is, which is why the jurisdictions do require that you have somebody go out there and map it, a geotech for a steep slope or a wetland scientist for any other critical area or a habitat biologist, if there's some habitat nearby. You need to know where the actual critical area is so you can figure out where the actual buffer is. You can figure out better, figure out where, what your critical area impacts might be. But I mean, I, I did look at the reports that were done, but I have not been on site, no. Hope that answered your question.
Yeah, you did, thank you for that, I appreciate that.
So there was a, sorry if I may speak, there was a geotechnical report where they did do test pits onsite and did review the site for sleeps, steep slope hazards. And they didn't find that any of the hazards or any of the, the site exhibited landslide activity and they were all stable.
Okay. And then in our code 185020, which is our environmental critical area definitions with landslide area, I noticed that one of those criterion is seepage of any sort. And so I'm assuming that as part of both the geotechnical report and any work that the city engineers may have done, we are not seeing any seepage on this site where the development is proposed.
I would say that the geotechnical report that was prepared for the critical areas report did not, did not encounter any, so.
I'm almost done, guys. And then the, so the street bonds that will be required of development, is that going to be sufficient to fix any road repairs that are necessary as a result of all the resulting truck traffic? Decide how big that bond is, sorry, John.
Oh, sorry. Currently, we do not have any impact fees in the code as far as heavy truck traffic. So, you know, that is something we should look at moving forward. Currently, the right, the right of way bond only has you bond for what is prepared or what is proposed for the road, for the right of way that is impacted along the frontage of the property. So there are other jurisdictions that do have heavy truck impact fees and it's certainly something that we would look at if the council so chooses.
Anything else, Jennifer, Valerie?
I have one more.
Yeah, no problem, I just wanted to make sure of this.
Yeah, totally. During the planning commission meeting, there is a request of whether the geotechnical engineer had reviewed the site plan, the, the proposed site plan. And Brian, you mentioned that he had done that. Is there, are we prepared to put a memo in the record documenting that?
So with the submission of the preliminary plat, there was the geotech report. And that does have a map of the proposed grading in that report, along with the current site plan that's updated. So I don't know if the city staff wants to add that to the record, if it's not already in.
It was my understanding that the geotechnical report was before the completed site plan, that's why I asked that question, sorry.
The engineer submitted and updated, as I mentioned, you know, the, the hearing was originally scheduled for March and we asked for additional information and included with that additional information was an updated geotechnical report that has the exhibit that Brian just referred to.
Okay.
And that is part of the project file.
Okay. I was just, right, because I knew there was some adjustments and I didn't know if that had been reviewed by the geotechnical engineer. I'm done, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Yeah, I, I will say, Val, it's an interesting question about, especially on a situation like this where there are as many trucks. I know they're multi axled and all that good stuff, but when Fruitlings was in place, you know, that is one thing that, and I assume the truck drivers know this, but certain roads in Breyer are not outside of Old Poplar Way, you'll have to get to the site, but things like Vine Road are not rated for certain load levels. And I know that it takes to come around back on Breyer Road and Poplar Way. So I, I think that, that is something which, I'm not quite sure how in the, you know, because if the damage happens in the period of construction, that would be pretty identifiable, you know, if something happens two years later, boy, it should be nice to be able to track it back. But I think that's a, it's a good observation in case there are future projects like that, so appreciate that comment. Anything else?
You know, that Atlas project brought, I can't, I mean, hundreds of trucks past City Hall every day, for days and weeks. And, but it's a good question, I mean, I like that one, I mean, if someone's going to damage our roads, I want them paying for it and not us.
Yeah, and especially if you know where roads is not rated for the, the weights and you're putting, you know, if you were putting a thousand trucks on or whatever, that, that's going to be an interest problem. So something for future discussion. Anything else?
I have a logistical question.
Hurry.
Were we to request that a geotechnical engineer be daily involved with parts of this project during construction? Is that something we would consider now as part of the preliminary approval? Or is that something we would stipulate as part of the final approval?
Well, the final approval would be after the project is complete or the plat improvements are complete. So it could also be conditioned as, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, as, as part of the construction drawing review process to have that type of?
We, yes, we can put conditions like that on, on the construction, on the land use permit if, if requested.
Okay. Is that something we would want to review at this stage or is that something that council will be involved in when we're doing land use?
Well, the land use permit is an administrative approval, so it's, it's staff. That said, you know, we can certainly take any recommendations from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and anything where we're, you know, you've got this kind of soils being done, they're being compacted. There has to be a, an engineer that is validating that those things are being compressed and compacted to the right levels and standards, correct?
Yeah, the applicant should be having a geotechnical engineer onsite, as Brian said, for not only the wall construction, but periodically when the fill is being compacted and that's certain, in the different levels, so.
Thank you. Alright, I believe, is there any other, any other questions or?
Our city attorney's unmuted herself.
I saw it, she got, she got primed, but she, she held that.
I heard Dawn, but it was John and he had an excellent answer.
Okay. Gotcha. I believe the motion on the table is to approve. Gotcha. I believe the motion on the table is to approve based on staff's recommendation, which does talk about the planting strip, but not the other two items that funding commission had recommended. So I believe that is what's on the table, it has been made and seconded, is there any other discussion?
Question.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
I call a further question.
I think he said no.
I missed the no part, we were all, okay, I saw some other looks, all right, sounds good.
And I, I just wanted to clarify that, that the planning strip is not currently in, in the resolution as written because it was agreed upon that would be done, but if you would like to add that or feel that that is necessary.
All right, okay, okay, that's fair, so that we have staff and the, the way the motion was, was straight up with the resolution as written without the, that's why I called it out, because I couldn't remember, so, so, thank you, Jennifer.
City attorney.
I do recommend having that added as a condition of approval.
Right, so perhaps, I guess what would be appropriate here is just ask Mr. Marley to amend.
Amend the motion?
Yep, and then.
Move to amend the, the motion to include the addition of the planning strip for the agreement in the staff report.
Second.
Right. So we have now amended the, the main motion at this time, right?
May I ask, may I ask one philosophic question? Jennifer, in the public comments or anyone listening, you know, attending today, has anyone commented that they're looking forward to this project as a citizen of Briar?
No one has, but I can't say that I've ever received such a comment on one of these types of applications. Well, actually, that was my thought. There was one on Briar Road where, you know, one of the, somebody said that they were very much looking forward to trying to buy into that, that development, so it did happen once, but, you know.
Thank you.
It's not fair that people provide that type of comment.
Excuse me.
Mr. Gallagher.
I called for the question.
Oh, if I may?
Please.
So, so there is a motion to amend and it was seconded, that actually has to be voted upon.
Right, so we've had that discussion, wasn't specific to that motion, but with the, the amendment made, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, so now we come back to the main motion. Thank you, Don, for holding me accountable there. And at this time, any last comments?
I'd like to move another amendment if I might.
No more comments.
Sorry, go ahead, Val, sorry, Mike, Val has a motion she'd like to.
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion approving this with a condition. Sorry, getting my phrasing right here. A condition that the contractor have a signed agreement with a geotechnical engineer to perform daily monitoring during excavation, the construction of the site walls and the subsequent grading. And that a weekly, a weekly report of this supervision be provided to the city.
Is there anybody wishing to second that motion? I'm not hearing anybody wanting to second this motion. If that's the case, then the motion will fail. All right, this motion has failed. Thank you for putting it forth. All right, we are back to the main motion at hand. Any other conversation? All right.
Just note quickly that monitoring is required per the, the staff report, I just wanted to put that in there.
I wanted extra documentation, thank you though.
Not at the intervals that you're describing, Val, though.
Okay.
I believe Mr. Gallagher was calling for the question again, I saw, I saw his mouth moving but couldn't hear him over everybody else.
Right. So if I have this right, we are back to the main motion, which has been made and seconded. There's no other discussion?
May I make a gentler amendment then? Then I'll be done.
I can put something forward.
All right, I would, I would offer an amendment to the motion that the contractor have an agreement with the geotechnical engineer that the regular monitoring of the excavation, construction of site walls and grading be reported on a biweekly basis to the city.
Is there anybody wishing to second this motion?
Val, if you wanted to change that to a regular basis, I'm, I'm not sure that biweekly would necessarily be considered a bit of a regular basis.
Okay, I'll accept Mr. Marley's amendment, my amendment to a regular basis.
I, I would second that.
All right, so I'll make sure I have this, so the statement of the motion is, the amending motion is that there is a what was, say that one more time for.
Contractor has a signed agreement with a geotechnical engineer to perform regular monitoring during excavation, construction of the site walls and subsequent grading with regular reports to the city of Briar.
Okay, so we've had a motion that's been made and seconded. I guess now at this time, is there any discussion? I have to admit, I, knowing that there are inspections on this, it has to happen, it's all part of the plat work.
It seems redundant to me.
Yeah, that, that is, that feels to me that we are covered, but that's my personal opinion.
I, I would normally agree, just wasn't explicitly stated, and so we haven't stated that there's monitoring by a geotechnical engineer, I would expect a report to come along, but I don't think it hurts to to call that out either, that's all.
All right, would our, just out of curiosity, city engineer or have anything you might want to weigh in on?
I would say that that's reasonable on some of these projects in other jurisdictions, I see it as frequently as we're discussing, so I think it's a reasonable request.
I might suggest that the, it be modified to just request those reports rather than the signed agreement with, between, you know, a contractor and their parties, but.
Yeah, because I guess in the end, having the report would mean that you're having a certified geotech providing that reports back. That, that's, to me feels like a reasonable. Val, would you be up for?
I'm playing with that way. I'm on it.
All right, try one more modification.
I'll withdraw that amendment, trying, trying to go again here. All right, so I'm going to propose that we amend this motion to clarify that a geotechnical engineer will be regularly involved in the construction phases of excavation, construction of site walls and grading and that regular, regular reports will be provided to the city of Briar.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Marley, so motion made by Councilmember Rosman, seconded by Marley. Any other discussion? Well, let's try it this way and we'll see whether or not we have to get voice, but all those in favor of the amending of motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Right, opposed? All right. So I, all right, I believe.
I didn't hear enough ayes or nays.
I think I had, I had, I think we had four ayes, but let's, because I was just be watching, so should we just do it by voice?
How about I do a roll call? How about I do a voice call so that we make sure that we've got them?
All right, that, I, I agree. Councilmember Nick?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockhart?
Aye.
All right, Councilmember Rosman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallagher?
Aye.
Councilmember Marley?
Aye.
Councilmember Moran?
Aye.
And I who have I forgotten?
You.
I, I did, I did five and a slash through five to give me six instead of four and a slash for five, so I am, anyway. I, I am I as well, the amending motion passes. So thank you, I do something funny, I thought they were big enough. All right, with that, we are back to the main motion again. Looking on the approval for ordinance, I'm sorry, on the resolution five eighty eight for the Philip Bridge, is there any other discussion? Any other proposal? All right. All right, the motion had been made and seconded. All those in favor of voting to grant the preliminary plat approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, the motion carries. We finished, thank you for all the diligent conversation, everyone. All right, we have one more item still on this part of the agenda back here, which was the, I think we have a consideration of ordinance forty three amending title twelve twelve relating to the right of way use permit fees, this has been previously discussed. Would somebody care to make a motion? Don't all jump at once.
Forty three, amending title twelve twelve relating to the right of way use permit fees.
Okay.
Right, motion was made by Marley, seconded by Gallagher, is there any discussion to the motion?
Seems much more sustainable.
Yes. With that, all those are approved, all those. Now, man, I can't even know, it's been one of those days, all those who, please signify by saying aye. I'm really with you. All those opposed? All right, motion carries. As we move into item nine, I did want to add one just last little thing, just because I did notice some folks did hang on from the city and as I do believe it might have been one person who missed their opportunity to speak that I, I did want to note that if anybody did have concerns and concerns, you know, around how, around any of the plat developments, how we assess, how we process all that. I, I know I speak for the mayor that I, please email him or call him and he will absolutely get back to you and have further discussions, so I just wanted to put that on the table just so that citizens can hear that. All right, miscellaneous, Paula, I see we're meeting next week for a workshop?
We, we are, as far as I know.
All right, awesome. Is there anything else we should be talking about? I'm not aware of anything, but.
Just one thing, there's follow-up materials coming from our tree canopy study that will be sent to you in a package, I got part one but not part two yet, so.
Looking forward to seeing the more detailed map. It was a little too low resolution. All right, well, I think we, why, does this, I guess this may fall to Mr. Nick because you did the auditing, I believe.
All right, Martin, I'm going to make a motion to approve of April twenty twenty two checks number four three six two six through number four three six two nine and checks number four three six thirty five through number four three six seventy two and an E F T transaction in the amount of one hundred and forty six thousand, three hundred and forty seven dollars and eighty four cents.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by Nick, seconded by Lockhart. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I got it right this time, opposed? All right, motion carries, I believe at this time. What was that, Mike? Sorry, okay.
Thank you, Dennis, for standing.
All right, yeah, absolutely. All right, well, with that, I would call the city council meeting to close at eight twenty five PM, thank you, everybody.
John and Jennifer and Dawn, have a great night.
Thank you.
John, Jennifer, Dawn.
Take care.
Thank you.
Good night.